Everybody to the workshop of the June 25, 2019, meeting of the Manatee County School Board. We're going to begin with reports and presentations. We have the pleasure and privilege of having with us Dr. Agruso to make a report concerning the Audit Committee.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Thank you for the time to be with you one last time. We have a new chair. We'll talk about that in a moment. Our meeting was June 12th. It was the day after your last board meeting. And our main topic of discussion that day was the CRI engagement letter, which you will be discussing later in this meeting. Just wanted you to know that the Audit Committee did review the letter with CRI. We did ask for some changes, so the copy that you were given actually reflects that. Some of the things that we were looking at, we wanted to have a little bit more discussion about what are called post-audit reviews. There are a number of them that need to be done. There will be some additional ones as we complete audits. About six months later or so, you go back and take a look to see if the corrections were made. And so, we asked them to expand on that a bit. We also asked them to put a little bit more detail on how they will be working with the in-house internal auditor that we're hoping you'll be able to hire this year, and also mentoring that individual to help them get up to speed and build that department and begin to do audits independently. We've asked them to put in a separate chart, which I'm glad to see is there. The very last, page 10 of the, of the letter actually shows just the audits we will be doing this year, so they could blow that up and actually really focus on what's planned for this school year. And it's quite an extensive list, by the way. And then we also have asked them to put in some contract, to note that there is a contract cap in here of $349,400 as the contract is currently written. There'd be 1,990 hours. That's the same as we have for the school year. It was a 7-0 recommendation to the Board. And in doing that and choosing which audits we needed to focus on this year, we looked at the five-year audit plan. And we're in the third year of that audit plan. The last two years have been a little uneven because we have spent so much of our time and so much of the internal auditor's time on the ERP. Not so much auditing, but more helping the district troubleshoot, fix problems, discover, you know, what they needed to do. And so, it is critically important that the Audit Committee and the internal auditor get back to focusing on true audits. With the new legislation that goes into effect on July 1st, this district is obligated to audit everything in the next five years. So, we don't have the luxury of saying, "Oh, we want this special audit done, so let's not do this other one." We really have to move through that five-year plan and take care of everything. So, we need to keep our feet, we need to be focused. We need to stay on top of this to make sure that we actually get that all done for you. The year, this year, some of the things that we have to do are high-risk audits. They are shown in that chart in red. Two that really stand out are student demographics, and we have allocated quite a few hours to that particular audit. Bond issues, issuance and compliance have to be done. We are finishing up the homeschool audit. That should be brought to you in July. The Audit Committee expects to discuss that at our next meeting, which is July 11th. We will continue payroll with particular attention to overpayments, and not only overpayments of staff if they've been made, but also overpayments in taxes. So, we're paying attention to that to make sure that the payroll taxes, pension, all of those kinds of things have been paid appropriately based on the actual payroll. We'll be doing the second year of the sales surtax, transportation, and then we'll have several areas that we'll be doing later in the year that come under finance and personnel. And those are, we're hoping some of the problems with ERP will be addressed, and we can do those later in the school year, so that, again, they are focused on the auditing aspect. Before we even got into this particular recommendation, though, those of you who are at the Audit Committee or who watched the, or listened to the tape know, we spent a lot of time reviewing how we got to the point where we made a unanimous recommendation to you to bring on CRI for another year. We are sensitive to the conversation you had at your last meeting. We wanted to address that, review everything that we have done, so that everybody can be comfortable with our decision. As you know, there were two proposals, and CRI had from the outset, the majority of the committee, and actually unanimous all the time, except for one vote we took, was that we were going to recommend CRI to you. They had a better proposal. And so, I wanted you to know, we weren't selecting from two. We weren't settling on one. We truly believe that CRI had a better proposal, would provide the services you need, and continue moving this district forward by doing the audits it has done. You benefit extra because they have a track record here of doing outstanding audits for the school district. They know the district. They have the institutional knowledge. And so, they hit the ground running. They continue moving forward. They know how to work with the district. They understand and have been responsive to your expectations, to the expectations of the Audit Committee. And so, we are absolutely confident that this is the best firm for you. At one, at the beginning of our discussions about CRI, there was one member of our committee who raised a concern. And it's a legitimate concern. And while the rest of us did not share it and didn't vote in terms of that concern, we recognize that any time a member in our committee raises something, we want to address it. And so, we took this on as an expectation, and it had to do with the staffing that would be provided to this school district to do the audits. And we were adamant with CRI that, yeah, you've done good work for us, but we want to see some additional staff. We want to see some additional experts here. And as those of you have heard, they've already begun to address that. They, as soon as we said it to them, they were already taking care of that. In their proposal, they had recommended Matt Incinelli to us, who has done audits on capital expenditures in the state of Florida. He is extremely experienced, really high level. He's doing your audits here. He's already begun that work. They are hiring a new certified internal auditor with experience. That person will join their team July 1st. So, we have seen that they've already addressed it. We know they will continue to address it, and we will continue to monitor every step of the way that they are providing you with the best, high-quality staff to do these audits. A second issue that had been raised did not come of the Audit Committee. It came from management, and that had to do with billing. And let me be really careful. There's not been any error in billing. The billing's been proper. The contract has stayed where it's supposed to. It's never been overbilled. The question was that so much of Mr. Shin's time, which is fairly high-level work, work as well as salary, that so much of his time was devoted to the audit. That was in practice because of how the audits came about, how his company started doing audits here, but also from the nature of some of the audits we did this past year, particularly when we looked at Agitect, and there was confidential information that had to be reviewed. That was something for him. He has always billed the district at a reduced rate, but he does get paid a fairly high rate. And so, we've looked at some of the billing that's been done, and we are confident that they're already, the company is already looking at having different staff who will be assigned to the audits. Mr. Shin is going to be taking a step back. So, we think the district's concern will be addressed to some degree. And again, we will monitor that. And of course, our highest priority is that no money is wasted and that we always stay within our budget. And so, we will continue to monitor that. And we think that the company has been sensitive and responsive to that concern. The thing that I do want to say to you about the Audit Committee, which many of you already know, we're a demanding group of folks. There is no one who's going to come before our committee. We're not going to give them a hard time. Even experienced auditors, we give them a hard time. We are demanding. We expect the best. And so, we're going to continue to try and get you the best service possible. So, sometimes when you sit in our committee and you hear some of our questions and some of our comments, we're making sure that these folks are doing what you need to do. And we commit to you that we will continue that practice, no matter who is before you, no matter what audits are coming to you. And we will make sure that you get the best service possible for the coming year. And so, I bring you a unanimous 7-0 recommendation from the Audit Committee to contract with CRI to continue the auditing services for the next fiscal year. Second issue for us is the Audit Committee Charter, and I know you have it scheduled later on for a discussion today. We thank you for pulling it from your last agenda because there is a change that's been made into the charter that we would like you to reconsider. One of the benefits of having the way the Audit Committee has worked is that the auditors have access to any information they need, and that's critical. And we, as a committee, have been respectful in our expectations and demands of the district for materials, but we need to have an open process where if we need it or we request it, we can get it. You have all acknowledged that we have not been excessive in our requests. We are committed to doing what is best for the district. We're not on witch hunt anywhere. We want to make sure our audits are accurate and complete. And so, when a sentence was added in here that said, "The Board would have to approve our requests for information," that really surprised us for a number of reasons. Most importantly, it gives the impression to people in our community that there may be an attempt or a desire to hold back information. And you have spent so much time trying to build trust, and we have spent so much of our effort building trust with you, building trust with the community. It's important that they know that if we need it, if we've requested it, we have access to that information, and we will handle it properly. We also didn't quite understand how this would work. I mean, logistically, as I talked with folks about this, including Mr. Dai, it seemed we would have to request everything from you. If I wanted to call Mr. Wagner because I needed a piece of information, you'd have to say, "Well, yes, Agruso should have that information to do her job." And that seemed, logistically, to not be possible. But mostly, it is an issue of trust, not undermining the committee, not slowing down audits, but importantly, making sure that this community knows that we are being upfront, we are being forthcoming, and absolutely transparent in all of our interactions. And so, we would ask you to make that change, go back to the original language, and we will continue being respectful of the process and doing what we have to do without burdening the district, overburdening the district. There are three other changes we have asked for as we went through the review. One was to simply remove a date of July 1, 2016, simply because it's not needed. It's a relatively minor change. We've asked you to put back in language that says the charter would be reviewed annually. We think that's good practice. And the reality is, at any time, the Audit Committee or the Board could ask for a change in the charter, but with having that annual review, we think is a good practice. And finally, we were having a little bit of trouble with some wording change on the mission for the sales surtax. We thought it might be just cleaner to go back to the original mission statement. Again, those are three relative, changes we would like to see, but of course, our big focus is on the language about having to approve documents. Just a couple of other issues that we have been grappling with. To be honest with you all, you know this. You've heard this before. We bring you recommendations. And we get frustrated at times because nothing happens, or nothing seems to happen, or very little seems to happen with those recommendations. So, we have decided that probably the best thing for us, and maybe the best help for you also, is if we actually created a spreadsheet where we've listed them out, and we can actually track what has been done within the district or steps taken by the Board to ensure that those recommendations have been addressed, including the ones where you're saying, "No, we're not going to do that." But we're going to create that spreadsheet, and we're going to just monitor and keep track of those, just as we have suggested the in-house internal auditor, keep track of all of the AG and other audit recommendations you've received that have to be addressed, so that there is a one place where everybody can go and say, "Okay, we know what we haven't done. We know what we have done and what our next steps are." So, we will be doing that. We have also talked with the district, and they've already been responsive to this. We truly believe that audit reports, including the one I'm giving you now, and audit, internal auditor reports, should be posted on the website. They should be accessible for everybody to see. And I will take steps and work with everyone else with your approval to make sure my reports are posted up there, or the next Chair's reports are posted up there, but also the internal auditor's reports, because we are recommending those to you. You do hear a public presentation on those, and our community should be able to read those. The last two have been posted. Mr. Wagner and Ms. Boyes have been very, very responsive to get those up. They're posted on the website, our link on your Board page. And so, we have brought that recommendation to you. We wanted, we decided to bring it as a recommendation because we wanted it to be front and center, that this is, again, a step for transparency, so that the community can see what's been talked about, what's happening, and where we are in that process. It also is a benefit to the staff because they too need access to those reports. When auditors come in, they're going to ask for the internal auditor reports. They have a place to go. They're right there, and everybody can see them. At our next meeting, as I said, we will be reviewing the AG's operational audit that came out a bit ago. We will also have, the district has told us, they will also present to us the action plan. And again, that's something we hope the in-house internal auditor will be able to monitor, to keep track that those action plans are completed, that the findings are all addressed, because as you know, the legislature's put some accountability on you and the superintendent to make sure that those findings are all taken care of in a timely manner. Our last bit is, as I said earlier, Mary Forman will be our new Chair starting July 1st, and Barbara Vetter, Mary's here, and Barbara Vetter will continue as the Vice Chair. I thank you for the opportunity to be Chair for the last two years, and I thank the Committee for giving me that opportunity. It's been quite a learning experience. And so, I am sure Mary will do an absolutely outstanding job. And we also unfortunately are losing a member, so we're going to be in the market for someone else. Doug Walters has informed us that he will not ask to be reappointed. He's been here for three years. He's been, had great service on our committee, and we thank him for that, and we will miss having his expertise. In addition, Barbara Vetter and I are on your agenda later today for reappointment, if that is your pleasure. We have both volunteered to renew for the next three years. And that is the end of my report. Our next meeting is July 19th. I'm sorry, July 11th, 2019.
Okay, thank you. Board members' questions. Okay, Board Member Kennedy?
Oh, thanks. Ladies first, or?
Well, okay.
I'll do.
I saw you first, that's.
Okay, good enough. Thank you and thank you. Thank you for your services, Chair, and thank you for re-upping. And I just have a couple, I basically, I'll refer to these, I guess, as, if this is fair to say, Mr. Minor's copy of the suggested changes that was tabled at the last meeting?
It was June 11th. It was the day.
Okay, great. And then, and then I've got the copy that, that you submitted to the Board Members via email with the, with the Committee's suggestions. And I'm not sure if this is the proper time to bring this up, but I'll just do it anyway, and I'll keep it brief. One of the, one of the items that I have talked to the Board Members about is kind of a communication flow. And I don't know if this belongs in the Charter or not, Board Members, but, but my request would be, and Dr. Agruso, I don't know if the Committee had a chance to discuss this, but, and I have the same suggestion for the Financial Oversight Committee as well, but that any request for information be approved by a majority of the Citizen Committee, whether it's audit or financial. The Chair of the Committee shall then communicate that request through the Agency Clerk, and then the Agency Clerk will disseminate that request to the appropriate school district staff. So, I guess my question to you, Dr. Agruso, would be, has your Committee had any opportunity to discuss that? I've raised it a couple of times over the past couple of months, so maybe not at the last meeting, but the meeting before, has it been?
Actually, I don't remember it coming up. Our, our practice right now is separate from audits. If a Committee Member wants information, they go to Ms. Boyes to get that and have it disseminated to everyone. So, if I understand it, what you're suggesting is if a Committee Member wanted information, this is separate from the actual audit, like if we're doing a find, is this just general information, that they would have to bring it to the Committee, and the Committee would say, "Yes, that's something you should get," and then request that of Ms. Boyes?
That's what I'm saying, yes.
Okay. I can ask, that would be Mary's call, if they want to discuss it at the next meeting. The Committee has not discussed that, so I'm not prepared to comment on it.
Okay, no problem. And I, and when we cover this later, I'll bring it up, I'll bring it up again. Oh, and one other question, Mr. Chair. Dr. Agruso, you, you just mentioned that we're in year three of a five-year audit plan, but we now have to, if I'm hearing you right, we have to continue working on what we're doing in year, but we're going to have, we're not going to year four. We need to create a new five-year plan.
We will have to create a new five-year plan. I don't, I don't believe the law requires you to do that now, since you already have a plan, but certainly within next year, at the end of next year, or the year after, you're going to have to create a next five-year plan and continue.
Okay, no, that.
The law does say is you have to have a five-year plan, but it also says, within five years, you must audit all areas of the district. So, I'll go back and double-check that wording and see.
So, it's, we don't necessarily have to, because we already have one?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, that's my understanding.
Okay, thank you.
Vice Chair Messenger.
I just had a couple things. You know, I think you kind of made a comment, and I think we've talked about it before, where, you know, things are said, and if we don't discuss it, then you guys don't know where to move forward, and the district doesn't know where to move forward, and you kind of, just kind of hit the nail on the head. So, I would like to say that one of the things that the Committee did talk about, and what we talked about yesterday, is that when a recommendation comes from the Committee, either Committee, and it seems like we might be talking about adding another Committee, but that, that one person from the Committee comes before us to present that. And, and that, I would totally support, and that was something that wasn't in your report, but your Committee did talk about it, the Audit Committee did talk about it. And I thought that was an important thing that we should want on this Board, is that someone from the Committee come forward and say, "This is why we're recommending that." I don't think that would have changed anything I said. I don't think that would have changed the way I voted, but I think that that would have, as I said to you yesterday, I think that would have made everyone as informed as possible. And I think that's an important thing for us. I think that, you know, we've been dinged before because we're not having enough conversations about these big topics, and we need to make sure we're having conversations about those big topics. And I think that a member of the Committee that's coming forward would be a catalyst to have those conversations, and I think that would be extremely beneficial in the future, when we know that a Committee is going to come forward, that we have someone that can come and present that.
If I, I just want to make sure I, we're talking about situations, like today, we have a recommendation to you for an engagement letter. So, we've presented that. We are here to discuss that with you. We're talking, you're talking specifically about when something is on your agenda, but there is no formal planned presentation from a member of our Committee to make sure that someone from our Committee is actually going to be presenting on that recommendation, such as the charter that was on the last.
Or, or, yes, any type of, I, to me, it seems to me that it would be beneficial if there is a recommendation coming from the Committee, that there is a member standing up here saying, "This is our recommendation. This is why we're having this recommendation." And whether the Board or not agrees, I think that that information would be important, so that we can make the best decisions possible. The second thing that I wanted to say is that, only to make it as clear as possible, that I agree with Audit Committee, that all of the audits should be on there. I see that there are two audits that were done by CRI on the Audit Committee's page. And I guess my only request would be, could we add them instead, or in both places, to the Transparency Manatee where the rest of the audits are? Because all of the other state audits are on a whole different section, and I would think that a Community Member might go to the Transparency Manatee section, where you can see a lot of the information already there, and may not see these on this other page.
Yeah, that had been mentioned at the meeting. I don't know if that link has been set up yet, so I think that's definitely, that would actually, we want to make it easy for anybody to find it.
Yeah.
Okay, because I looked at it the other day, and I didn't see it on there, because I know you guys had talked about it, and I agree with that. It should be there. And what I do see there are really great information for the community, like the finance, finance and budget documents. You know, there's monthly budget amendments there. There's internal account reports. You know, there's a lot of really great information there. But I guess my request is that we make sure those are all in one place, so that if somebody's looking, they don't have to go and hunt and find a different page to find those things. And if I, if we put them in both places, that's great, but I think any Community Member that's looking for all the audits is going to come to Transparency Manatee, because that's where all the other audits already are.
And that's fine. We just want them up.
Agreed. And I, and that's why I wanted to say, you know, I think sometimes, you know, we, we need to make sure we talk about those things. I, I think we should have those things up there, and we need to make that clear, that we, we believe those things should be up there, then. I would like to make that clear. I agree with that. So, those are really my only comments.
Good. Great, great comments. Any other Board Members have comments at this time? Earlier, I heard you make reference to the five-year plan. And my understanding is that the Audit Committee is focused on completing the present, you know, five-year plan, and that's reflected in recommendations for an engagement letter with CRI.
That's correct.
And to get out of the assisting, pretty much into the auditing business to complete the, it won't be completed this coming year, but putting us in good position to complete all of the audits and the five-year plan. And then, I, my understanding is you're saying that the status said, "Well, then you got to have another five-year plan." And so, we'll have another five-year plan, beginning, I guess, two years from now. And I'm, I'm not sure if that new five-year plan has to be entirely different from our current five-year plan. I guess we do that evaluation and come to that conclusion.
That's a good point.
And advise our, our auditors accordingly. That's your understanding? Okay, great. I just, I think it's important our community be aware of where we're going with these five-year plans. I, I think that, you know, Board Member Kennedy and Vice Chair Messenger, you know, raised some real, really good points. And the, I, I think we all want to be very transparent, and at the same time, you know, do it in an orderly, you know, fashion. And what Board Member Kennedy was suggesting, I, I think is, is a great suggestion. It's respecting the integrity, the voice of the Committee, and we need to have these things to do our job. And we, we want, it raises a question about approval, and I want to just ask you, is there any limit that there should be to the expense in responding to requests for documents or information? Is there any limit to the expense that you know of or believe in? Or is it unlimited?
Expense?
What?
Any limit to the expense?
Yeah. Do you believe there should be any limit to the expense that the district expends in complying with the request of the Audit Committee or any other Committee?
Theoretically, no.
Okay.
But practicalities, we understand. I don't have a good answer for you.
How would you limit it?
In the terms of how our Committee functions. We function within audits that are taking place, and we have limited by the name, by your approving the audit plan. We are limited by those particular audits. That's what we stick to. If there's going to be a change, we bring it back to you. If there's going to be additional funds, in terms of what the district needs to provide, it's the documents associated with those audits that go to the internal auditor.
It seems like you're advocating unlimited discretion in requesting whatever the, the Committee wants. And I, I don't think that reflects well upon, you know, the organization. Ultimately, the five of us here are responsible, you know, for, to the community, which is the ultimate auditor, as to how we use the public money, and how much money is going this way and that way, and money out of the classroom, be it the Audit Committee or whatever. The five of us are responsible. And so, language saying that, you know, you know, subject to approval or whatever it is, isn't necessarily to be interpreted as trying to prevent the public knowing, but to let the public know that the Board is responsible and is taking responsibility for those expenses. You have a problem with that, I guess. And, but I think that what Board Member Kennedy, you know, suggested is something that I, I think helps to, you know, address that and to do it in an orderly way, and in a way that, you know, to the public knows that we're, we're making, we're looking over to make sure that the expenditures are consistent with what I think the public would like them, you know, to be.
Mr. Minor, we are certainly different. We are, I can only speak for the Audit Committee, and that's all I will speak for. The audit, an audit is assigned to an internal auditor who has access by law to any documents he or she needs to get that audit done. The Audit Committee needs to be able to have, review that same information if we are to monitor audits. Mr. Kennedy's suggestion, as I understand it, is specific to if an Audit Committee Member wants something different. I'll give you a perfect example. An Audit Committee Member requested information about the Agitect contract this school year. He requested it because he had a legitimate concern. Under Mr. Kennedy's suggestion, what, what would be done in that case, because that's not an audit we had agreed to or the Board had approved, that person would come to the Audit Committee first and say, "I have a concern here. I want to request these documents." The Audit Committee would say, "Okay, under the auspices of the Audit Committee," The audit committee would say, okay, under the auspices of the audit committee, we agree that you, that those documents should be provided. So you have an automatic limiting factor right there. I would also say to this.
But, but that, that isn't a procedure presently employed.
And I have no problems with that specific procedure, but I'm only speaking for me. The audit committee hasn't discussed this. But that's because that's out of, that's not an audit that we are conducting. If we are conducting an audit, transportation is a perfect example. And you're sitting there and they've done all this stuff and they've looked at the transportation files and they've gone through all this stuff. And I'm reading this and I look at it and say, well, what about the homeschool kids? And people would say, well, homeschool, homeschool doesn't get transportation. But precisely, that's why an auditor should be looking at that to make sure they were not listed on the transportation rolls. That's part of an audit. So an audit can take you in many directions. And if every time a question gets asked, we have to come to you and say, vote on whether we need this, we will get no work done and there will be a transparency issue. The other thing I would say to you is I would look back on the seven years that this committee has been in existence. We have never, ever violated our charge. We have never, ever abused the requests to this community or to this school district. And I would ask you, because auditing has to be above board, has to be so open to the public that they can trust what we are saying, that you can trust what we are saying, that you not put that limiting language in our charter. If we misbehave, if we do not live up to our mission and our charge, then you hold us accountable. And you would hold me or the new chair standing here accountable for not doing what we're supposed to do. But we've never had this problem with our committee. And I think you're trying to create a solution to a problem that doesn't exist, and I would ask you not to do this. If you have a different issue, a different group, that's something else. I'm not going there. But us, this is auditing. Auditing has to be open and free. And the information cannot be in any way jeopardized that someone thinks we're doing something wrong.
Okay, thank you very much. Any other questions? Board member Golden.
Yeah, I have two concerns. First, with respect to a direction given by the board or decision made by the board to audit a particular function. You're not, and I don't think we are suggesting either, that there ought not be the ability to inquire, to make a determination of what you need to do that audit. That's not what we're discussing here. What I think the chair is alluding to is an initiated request from the audit committee about something that has not been determined or decided for audit. And I think what I'm hearing, some of the members of the board say, well, that's all right. Let, let them ask and we will decide whether that's a legitimate area, I'll say inquiry. What I'm hearing the chair say is that that is not all right. That that's, that that moves beyond the scope of the duties of the audit committee. An audit committee is an audit committee. So, so they're circumscribed just by the word audit. And, and we're not going to decide that right now. But I just want to know if I have articulated accurately the concerns coming from the board. We, we'll discuss that and we'll make a decision. But I just want to make sure that I've articulated that and framed it properly as to what, what is being discussed. That's, that's the first thing. I don't need a response.
Well, if you don't mind, I would like to just offer some information. I think there, there may be a way for us to distinguish between what are a committee members' requests that they would like the audit committee to say okay to, which is something that's not involved in an audit. And Agittec would be a perfect example. We did come back to the board and say, we want to do this audit. And I think what you're suggesting is we do it a step earlier. If, you know, so if a committee member comes up and says, we think we should be looking at this because, and I want this information, it's bring it in our report and say, we would like to go ahead and do this. And it's something though, that we can very much distinguish from an ongoing audit. It's something extra in addition we would bring to you. And I think we may be able to work something out in that direction. But if we're sitting in a committee meeting and we're reading an audit and we say, but we need information on this to answer that audit question, what I am saying to you is we need to be able to have the freedom and flexibility to do that.
I don't think that there's any issue with you're performing what is necessary to do an audit. I think the issue is where does the germination of a decision to ask for information not under audit begin?
And so we're going to have to work on some careful language about that.
Well, we are going to have to do that.
Well, and we would ask that you allow us as our committee to have that input also because we want to make sure what happened with the last change does not happen again.
Okay, duly noted. Okay. The second concern that I have is with the charter. And that is the June 11th iteration of the charter talks about the composition of the audit committee. And I believe you just made a report saying that we are now at the last board meeting of this particular fiscal year and there is a vacancy. And we are charged with filling that vacancy. And so I would want to ask us to be cognizant of the fact that by July 1, we're supposed to have a full complement. If not, we come, I'm so sorry. I'm sorry, attorney, did, did you say something? Oh, okay. Okay, I'm sorry.
We went two years without seven members, just so you know.
Which we are taking heat for in the newspaper. Because, and, and, and I don't want to get into that. What I simply want to try to do is improve on how we select or how we elect someone to fill that vacancy. Because what I'm hearing you say is that right now, we have six of a seven-person complement that we need. And the point that I want to make is, all this says here is that they will be appointed by the school board. There's no process for how to apply or how to engage community involvement, whether they should speak to a school board member, whether they file an application with the superintendent, whether they put in an application with the audit committee itself. Do we receive recommendations from the audit committee? So if, if you, if you don't have any input in that regard, that is what I'm trying to address. How, how, now that we have a full complement of three people, of people who can serve three-year terms, we're now confronted with our first vacancy. And, and that should be filled, in my opinion, by the first of July. Because it says, effective July 1, 2016, the committee shall consist of seven members. So effective July 1, unless we meet again, we will not have seven members. We won't meet again until I think July the 23rd. Is that what it is?
I don't think you can get someone by next week.
That's right. So I just want to.
Yeah, the process we've used in the past is the district has put out an advertisement with your authorization. The district puts out an advertisement. People will submit applications. They send them to the district. And then the audit committee has looked at those and interviews have been conducted by a representative of the audit committee, usually the chair. The last time I did not do the, the interview, we had Mr. Blitsko do it on, on my behalf, and the chair of the committee and of the, I'm sorry, the chair of the committee and the chair of the board. And that's how, and then they bring the recommendation to us and we bring the recommendation back to you because you do the appointing.
Dr. Russo, everything that you just said, is that written down somewhere?
No.
I didn't think so.
Not that I am aware of.
And that's precisely my point. There may be a better way. But if this is the way, we at least ought to have the benefit of that. At least I should. I'm just new. Everybody else probably knows this and have it memorized. But I'd like to, to be clear. Because I think that the community and the board deserves to have a seven-member audit committee by the 23rd of July. That's, that's my point. Thank you very much, Mr. Chair.
Thank you very much, Board Member Golden. Any other questions, the board? Thank you. Why don't you stick around? We may have some other things that interest you. The public comment, Board Member Vice, Vice Chair Messenger. And I'm, I'm going to ask our, our clerks, you know, with the next item coming up, review of audit committee charter. Can you provide to all the board members and the, and the public copies of the present charter and a, you know, proposed, you know, charter that was, you know, taken off the last meeting?
Yes, Chair Minor, I have copies of the one that was taken off of the last meeting. And I also have copies of the changes the audit committee has made.
Okay. And do you have the present charter? Yeah, if you provide that, and that would be part of the discussion that comes up under, under the workshop. But first of all, I turn the gavel over to our distinguished vice chair Messenger for public comment.
Our one and only, and I don't think I need to even read the rules. Come on down, Mrs. Mendel.
Hi. Apparently we have the wrong student progression plan, the draft. There have been parents that have been racking our brains, working together to go through this document since we received it on Friday. We are all incredibly frustrated and very upset. A new one went up. It's still not public. It's not on the website. So other parents can't see it. I'm kind of texting people as to letting them know what's in it because I have the proper one here now. But just to give you some insight, I don't know what's in it, but based on what we have, this is the response from parents. I'm going to read on behalf of Tracy Kondrat. After having read through the student progression plan, there are many items concerning to me. Let's see. The district criteria in the last document was basically banning opt-out and disallowing enrollment in advanced middle school classes without a three on the FSA. Scoring a three on the FSA should not be the only criteria. Now, again, I haven't seen the new document, so the language may be different. But based on what we've seen, three should not be the only criteria for a student to enroll in advanced classes in either middle school or high school. Wouldn't it seem fit that the teacher who, who is experienced and knowledgeable in that area of study and has spent 180 days with that student be a better judge of what a student is capable of accomplishing in the future than one single test given on a single day? Our students are more than a score. Students have worked 180 days on that subject area and are maintaining adequate grades and have the knowledge base to succeed in the next level should not be punished for an arbitrary grade on a state test that may or may not test on what the student has learned. The district assumes that the students are learning all things on the test when, as a parent, I know that there are questions on the test that students have not been taught. How do I know? My children tell me. When a student is concerned with their educational path because the district doesn't take into account their years' worth of work, it only looks, and only looks at the number on one test, the district is failing the student. The current wording should stand for all advanced classes with the addition of or, not and. And we had worked through all that last year. Teacher counselor and/or administrator recommendation, a 3.0 grade average for the year in the previous course. In all my years of schooling and working, I've never been judged or scored on a single test event or project. Job reviews, promotions are all earned and rewarded for a body of work. The district should be remiss if they do not see this, that this test and punish culture is doing more harm than good to all of our students. And in addition, I would like to add the fact that the waiver is not included with the document. It says, uh, duh, duh, duh. Let's see. Trying to find the section. Another thing is some parent, having some parents on this, on the progression plan committee sure would be helpful and make parents feel like we are part of the solution rather than the problem. 180 days does count for something and it should be the crux, the philosophy of our student progression plan. Please allow parents a seat at the table.
Thank you. If you have any loose hope of comment?
Mrs. Mendel, can you type that up and provide that to all the board members?
Sure. Tracy did send that to you. I'm just reading.
Okay.
She sent you yesterday.
Okay. Thank you. And that's the end of board comments, which brings us to the workshop. And the first item is review of the audit committee charter.
Do you regularly talk to yourself?
All the time.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
I'll, I'll just lead off with a couple of questions. Is there in the?
Thank you.
Let's see where we have differences. The, in both. I, I think everybody agrees with the first sentence. Is there any question about that?
I don't know which document you're looking at.
Okay, well, yeah, I got three too. And I think it all has the same thing. That the primary mission of the audit committee is to assist the Manatee County School Board in providing oversight of the internal and external audit functions. And see sales tax for additional mission. And I, I think that's consistent in, in all three copies.
Mr. Chair for a question?
Sure.
Since we've got three documents in front of us, could you share with us the process that you want to go through to have this discussion?
Well, I'm trying to elicit any questions that anyone has about any of the three.
I just, they were just laid on the desk.
Sure. I have a question. Okay. Board Member Golden?
Am I correct in saying that the three documents that before me are a revised edition of the audit committee charter that was revised on April 25, 2017? And a second document of that revision that was made on June 11, 2019, which is the document that we tabled for consideration in a workshop. But since we tabled that document, that there has been a third revision dated June 12. And that that is the revision that is before us in this workshop. That's my question.
Same, same question. We all want the same question answered.
Okay. Why don't we table this? You know, for the next meeting, we all review this. Have any objections?
Mr. Minor, I spent, I don't want to say a lot of time, but I spent time being ready for this today.
Okay.
And I really hate for all that work. Woe is me to, to go to waste. I really, I walked in here today prepared to talk about this and I don't want to let it get away.
Okay, I, I think Board Member Kennedy wants to share, you know, with us some thoughts that.
Before, if, if the board would like to table it, can I at least share my thoughts and then?
Yeah, why don't you do it and we bring it back to the next meeting and everybody trying to remember very closely and maybe review on television what you had to say as far as input on this.
Okay.
Would that be all right?
That's fine.
No objection? Okay.
I will, to answer the question of which copy are we working from?
I think that's a good start.
I, I guess my preference would be to work from the copy dated June 12 from the audit committee because most of the changes of the audit committee or the suggestions of the audit committee are the changes that I support. So to keep this short, let me, I will work from the June 12 copy.
Okay.
Okay. And we've all got a document that has red type, so I'm just going to go through the track changes. And then I'm going to make one suggestion for the ad that I mentioned to Dr. Russo during her. to Dr. Russo during her Audit Committee report. First paragraph under mission, I think the change to RFQ is fine. Do we also want to change that text to review the request for qualifications? Because the text says, "Review the request for proposal." So do we want to change that to "Request for Proposal/Qualifications" to match RFP/RFQ? That'd be my first suggestion. I'm fine with the rest of it. There are no changes. And even the June 11 copy, there are no changes to the rest of the mission, the mission statement. Moving down to composition of committee, I have no problem with that first change from "that" to "who." Taking out effective July 1, Dr. Russo mentioned that's kind of extraneous. And again, I support this change that's been brought forward by the Audit Committee at the end of the first paragraph under composition to say, "All terms will be for three years, and committee members may be appointed to serve consecutive terms. Should a vacancy occur on the committee, the school board may appoint a replacement to fill the vacancy for the remainder of the first term," which there's a slight add there.
Didn't say "first."
From the original. Sorry?
Says vacant. Didn't say...
Did I misspeak? I'm sorry. Okay, I was just trying to confirm. Okay, there is, at the...
Administrative.
The second, no, I'm still, I just want to walk us through the whole thing. It won't take me long. The next, the second paragraph under composition, there are some semicolons added, and there's an "and" slash "or" added.
Can I interrupt you just a sec?
Of course.
Let me, you know, say to my fellow board members, if you have some thoughts, Mr. Kennedy, I have it on good authority, spent a lot of time and effort just, you know, looking at this, and if you have some, you know, questions...
As we go?
As we go, and, you know, just kind of raise your hand or whatever. I think that what I understand on the first paragraph is that Mr. Kennedy is, you know, saying that the idea of staggered, you know, terms for board members, he thinks is not as preferable as just saying everybody is, you know, three years.
Yeah, personally, I just don't see what the difference is. You know, once you're appointed, you're appointed for three years.
Mr....
Yeah, okay. Board Member Hope's...
Which has been taken out was the enabling language to set up the committee originally set it up. So there's no need to stagger terms, because they're already on staggered terms, because everybody has been appointed, at least initially. And so part of going through a charter like this is to move the extraneous language which established it in the first place, and that's why you no longer need staggered terms, because the terms are staggered.
Okay. I think that's a good point made by Board Member Hope's in carrying over language from 2016 where it began, effective July 1, 2016. I think that Board Member Hope is saying that's extraneous, and I think that Board Member Kennedy is suggesting, okay, let's just say all three years. Yeah, three-year terms for everybody. Yeah, Board Member Golden?
I appreciate that, but if the terms are in fact staggered and to remain staggered, there always has to have been a starting point for that, because somebody will look at this three years from now and will not remember that so-and-so-and-so-and's three years began in 2017, and so-and-so-and-so-and's three-year term began in 2018. And when it is time for them to roll off...
It's on the website.
When it is time for them to roll off or come before us to be replaced or to be renewed, we don't want to lose track. We got seven people, six now. We still have to do a seven, and we haven't said anything about how we're going to do that.
Okay.
That's my only...
Okay.
I'm simply saying, I think we ought to say, still, effective July 1, 2016, that I think ought to remain in there, because it goes forward from there after with three-year terms that will be staggered beginning.
Thank you, Board Member Golden. Okay. Yes, if somebody got a cell phone, please go outside.
I think that was in the hallway. I think that was in the hallway.
Yeah. Board Member Kennedy, thank you. Why do you...
Keep going.
Sure.
On page two, under administrative, I really, I'm a little bit agnostic about this one. I just wanted to bring it up as a point of thought.
Agnostic. I'll remind you, we have a reverend on the board here. Go on.
Well, it's not Sunday, so I'm okay.
Oh, my goodness.
The Audit Committee, I'm just going from the top. The Audit Committee will meet as the need arises and will report to the board after each meeting. No change. Now, here's where the change comes in, and here's what I just want to bring up if it matters to anybody. A majority of the committee membership shall constitute a quorum, and then there's a strike through on the Audit Committees. They have struck through, decisions will be made by that quorum, and that change has now been, all decisions shall be made by the vote of a majority of a quorum present at the meeting. So granted, it's only seven members, or now it's six, so you still need four, even if there's six, you still need four. But now, if there's only five members at the meeting, now you only need three votes to make something happen. So it's a, I'm splitting hairs a little bit, but I just wanted to, again, like I said, I'm fine with the change that the Audit Committee is suggesting, but I just wanted to raise You know, should we keep the higher standard for a quorum, or do we loosen it by saying that there is a quorum of the members present? Like I said, I'm agnostic, but I don't know if anybody else is, wants to go to church on that one.
Okay. Board Member Hope's, do you have some comments?
I think, I think one of the concerns was, because we did go a considerable amount of time where I think we only had like five members, and so you could run in a situation where they wouldn't be able to have a quorum, but keep in mind, the Audit Committee makes recommendations to the board. So we can weigh the decision based on, you know, if you had, because otherwise, what could happen is they could show up and not be able to do any work. And I just want to point out that we're not short, we're short on Audit Committee member at the end of this month. I mean, we have, he's there, you know, we need to, you know, solicit a replacement. But I think, I think if I recall, it was important, should we ever get into a situation again where we have a resignation? Because remember, for the longest time, we couldn't find people to volunteer to be on the Audit Committee. And so we certainly would not want to be in a situation where if we were down to five again or to four, you can almost never get a quorum if you've got somebody that's out. So I think the, I'm comfortable with the language, because they're not making decisions, they're making recommendations to the board, and we can weigh that recommendation based on the members who were present at the time they formulated their opinion.
Okay. Thank you, Board Member Hope's.
Does Dr. Hope's have a question?
No. You can address your questions to the chair, though.
Okay. Well, he just said, under administrative here, that all decisions shall be made, and I guess for splitting hairs, do you have a problem with all recommendations? Because that's what you just said.
Well, but they're making a decision to make a recommendation.
Okay. That's fine. I'm sorry.
All right. Thank you. Board Member Kennedy, you have the floor.
Thank you. On this point, I'm going back, I'm going back from the Audit Committee document, the June 12 document, back to the, our charter that is currently in place, which is the 2017 document, and I'm just going back to the same, the language that's in place now is, "All decisions shall be reached by consensus of the members present. If no consensus can be reached, then a decision will be approved by a vote of a simple majority of members at the meeting." So in effect, what I'm suggesting, the, is already in there. So I guess as far as I'm concerned, nothing needs to change. Okay. Or, like, I don't really think anything needs to change. Dr. Hope's makes a good point, that these are recommendations, not set in stone. "The school board will provide such administrative support as is necessary for the committee to perform its assigned tasks," excuse me. Now, the Audit Committee has struck through, I believe what are, I think it's fair to call Mr. Minor's changes, from the June 11, the June 11 copy. And to pull us back to this conversation again that we just had a half hour ago, Dr. Russo's understanding of what I said is correct. Obviously, if there's an audit going on and it is on the audit plan, then any information can be requested at any time. Agittec is a good example. If it's an item that is not on the audit plan that someone would like to, a committee member would like to request, I believe that should be requested by a majority. So my suggested language to add here would be, "Request for information," and after that conversation, I added this caveat, "outside of regularly scheduled audits shall be approved by a majority of the Audit Committee. Once approved, the chair of the Audit Committee shall communicate that request in writing to the agency clerk. The agency clerk shall communicate that request to the superintendent in a response given to the Audit Committee in a timely manner."
Mr. Chair?
Okay. Board Member Hope's?
I think we may need a longer conversation. We're moving from charter language to operating procedures, and my suggestion would be, this is a charter that establishes the board's committee. What you're really talking about is something that's needed. It's needed for all the committees, including us addressing our own operating procedures. A charter is that basic document that lays out the membership and quorum and things like that. What you're getting into, which is long overdue, are operating procedures that this board approves for how these entities are going to conduct business and communication. And so my suggestion is, and we need like a full day or two of a workshop with the five of us, to go through operating procedures, to establish operating procedures for the way the Audit Committee conducts its work on our behalf. The Citizens Financial Oversight Committee, how they conduct and how they communicate, you know, with the district. Our own operating procedures haven't been addressed in years, and we've had multiple requests to do it. So I ask, you know, and I don't, I don't want, you know, I'm trying to be diplomatic. Really, a charter is that basic document that establishes the makeup of the committee, a primary role and mission. And you're right, we do need operating procedures, and you and I were both at the Audit Committee meeting when I talked about, you know, communications and things like that. So my suggestion would be, we, I believe we have a good working document with regards to the charter, but what we really need to do is sit down and have a very deliberate conversation about how these entities operate and how they interact with the administration, how they interact with the board, and things like that. And that's a different conversation, but it's one overdue. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay. Thank you, Board Member Golden. May I point out, this is an administrative section of the charter, included, you know, for the purpose of how they're going to be administrated. It's, there are different forms of the charter. We got the mission, composition of committee, now how does it work? And this is an attempt in all three documents to set forth how it's going to work. And the, there was discussion, you know, earlier about how it's going to work. We all want it to work well. We all want it to work responsibly. Board Member Kennedy brought up, I thought, some very, you know, good ideas about how we maybe avoid maybe misuse of the desire for information. When I say by that, anybody can go make a public records request. If we're going to provide it for free, that, is there any, shouldn't it be in the role as a member of the committee? And if it's on behalf of a committee, I think I understood, Mr. Kennedy, to say, okay, let's have it, an endorsement, you know, by the committee, you know, for going to get these things. If they're sitting around, you know, having a committee meeting and saying, "We really want to, you know, find out this information. We want it now. We don't want it next week or tomorrow." They could say, okay, we all want this, you know, let's get this. There's going to be a board liaison there. Ask the board liaison to get it. Now, I don't think that's cumbersome or delay, and I think it's in line with what Board Member Kennedy was saying for doing it. And I think that, you know, the wording of it needs to be worked out, but I think that's how to make sure that the public treasury is, you know, protected from something that may be, something that really isn't furthering the goals of this committee. So we don't have, we're not going to decide that now, but we're having a good discussion about it. Okay. It's still your floor.
Okay. I'm giving it up to Reverend Golden.
Okay, Reverend Golden. Board Member Golden?
The only additional aspect that I see with respect to that is that what Mr. Kennedy is proposing prevents one person from hijacking the process that's designed to help audit, to help the audit process, to use it, I think I saw that word in there somewhere, for personal, whatever purposes that might be, honorable, it doesn't matter. The process, the administrative process, should not be used beyond the extent to which the charter itself is granted, and that is to help the Audit Committee audit. All this says is that, and when there's someone who's on the Audit Committee that wants to get beyond audits, they have to get a majority of the Audit Committee to bring that recommendation to the board. And I think that's pretty straightforward and makes it very transparent.
Thank you, Board Member Golden. Okay. Board Member Kennedy, did you have some further?
Yeah, real quick, I'm almost done. Let me, let me just address this really quick, though. I think Dr. Hope's makes a good point. We, whether, again, I'm agnostic on this, whether we do it in the charter, we do it in operating procedures, but I just think it's, we want to get it in writing somewhere, which I'm fine either way. And in all honesty, the Audit Committee is not the, is not the reason that I am making the request of this communication flow. It's to help streamline the processes of the Financial Oversight Committee, but in fairness, I think both committees should operate the same way. That said, last page, internal audit service. I have no, I have no problems there. They're both the same. And then the final, the final, the mission of sales surtax, these, Dr. Russo, you could just shake your head, but these, both, the June 11 copy and the June 12 copy, appear to be saying the same thing, just a little bit differently. So I don't think there's really a substantive difference. It's just two ways to say the same thing. So, so that was, that's it for me. That's...
Okay. Thank you.
All I wanted to get out.
Okay. Board Member, or Vice Chair Messenger. Okay.
Call me whatever you'd like. I just wanted to say that I agree with the changes that I heard from Mr. Kennedy. I really liked the additional language. I do hear the point that, you know, maybe there should be a separate document, but I also hear the point that, you know, this is the administrative section, and it needs to be in writing somewhere. I think that the workflow that would be created with that language, I think, seems like it would work for everyone and would serve the purpose that I think was trying to be achieved. So I support those things. I would like to see it in writing. I know that we're not deciding it today, but I would like to see that in writing. But otherwise, I can see that I could be in favor of those changes, and as I said, I just wanted to make that really clear.
Okay. Thank you, Vice Chair Messenger. All right. It seems like we have basic agreement of everybody involved, where we want to go in terms of revisions, improvements, you know, for the charter. And I think that Board Member... And I think that Board Member Kennedy made a good point. We're, as far as operation of both of this and the Oversight Committee, to have the same kind of administrative, I guess we're calling it, you know, provision that works, is not cumbersome, is open. And I, Board Member Golden, you know, raised a good point. It's actions on behalf of the committee. This is sort of preventative of any board member just doing whatever they want to do. But it's getting the information for whatever committee it is. And may I suggest, we really actually had the discussion, even though we were talking about putting it on the agenda for a workshop, you know, before the next meeting. I, may I suggest that for the next, not tonight, but for the next meeting after tonight, we put on the agenda, you know, for that meeting, you know, these revisions, you know, and send it out. And even at the meeting, we could make provisions if it's not interpreted correctly, you know, by staff or your humble chair, or non-humble, you know, chair, of what we were just talking about as far as changes. And then, you know, vote out at that time. Does that seem to, you know, work for everybody? Okay, okay, Board Member, or Vice Chair Messenger.
I think that sounds like a great idea. Plus, it sounds like they will have another meeting beforehand so they can talk about the things that we talked about, so that we can all be on the same page. And I think that would be beneficial to everyone.
Okay, you know where all we're coming from. We're not trying to impede, you know, the public or the committees getting the information. We want to have it a little bit organized and responsible, from our viewpoint. So, okay, thank you very much. You'll have something, and we'll have something for the next meeting. It looks like Michelle is nodding and saying, "Okay, that, we'll try to make that work." Okay, we have a wonderful lady named Kimberly Organic about student progression plan. And I understand that she's putting in a lot of work to help further the responsibilities and knowledge of our community about our constitution with the Constitution Essay Contest about the time of the celebration of the anniversary of our constitution. And thank you very much. How's that for a plug?
That's great.
Okay, thank you.
Good afternoon, everyone.
Good afternoon.
Okay, may I make a special request? You heard earlier, you know, concerns expressed by, you know, one of our citizens. What I had some notes about, and this is very complicated, you do great work, about qualifying for the, you know, I guess, you know, the special classes, advanced classes, that, and the appeal was there ought to be some additional criteria that someone, you know, a student would qualify for. I don't know if that's lawful or what, but, you know, she seemed very passionate about that. And if it's lawful, I'd like to know why it's not a good idea, or maybe it's a good idea we should amend.
I would actually have to speak with her at further length to get more information on what change she really wants. Because this document, the section she's discussing, which is page 39, there's no changes to that this year. So this is the same document that was approved last year. So I'd really need to look into that further as to what specifically she's referring to for a change. Okay, so.
Okay, all right, fine, thank you.
I do want to start off with an apology. Our department, when we posted the board work for this workshop today, was a new employee who inadvertently, when they uploaded the information for the workshop for the first time, it somehow attached the 1718 plan with the changes for 1819, which was the document that was in the system for a year ago this month when this presentation happened. So that's why it was the wrong one posted. So we do apologize for that. We do have the hard copies up back and we'll post the current 1820 document.
What's the deadline? Okay, excuse me.
Can I have some questions?
Yeah, Vice Chair Messenger.
Where will this be posted? Because for me, I like to read things before the workshop. I usually read things several times before a workshop. And I looked through this before and was actually a little frustrated because like, gosh, I thought we addressed all these things. I didn't notice the date. Then somebody else noticed the date and said, "Well." And I was like, "Oh, no wonder. I'm sitting here frustrated because these are changes we had already dealt with."
Right.
So I can really understand why the public is upset. So I want to know, where is this going to be posted so that everyone can see these changes and will be able to contact us about their concerns about this document?
We can post it on our professional learning website. But I'm told by Michelle that the agenda was locked. So we can't insert it in there at this point. I don't know if that ever comes unlocked. I don't know that whole process. But she couldn't attach anything in there today because of the agenda being locked and take out the 1718 and put in the new one. So we can post it on our website. I don't know if that's anything that can be addressed later.
Ms. Messenger, to answer your question as well, on the policy page of once the approval to advertise happens this evening, then there is a link that goes active. And on our policy page, there is the proposed student progression plan with the document that I received at 2:00 this afternoon, which is the corrected student progression plan. Will go live for people to have the opportunity to look at for the next 30 days until we have the public hearing at the end of July. I'm sorry, it's in August. The public hearing is in August.
Yes, August 14th. Mr. Chair, can I ask one more question?
Yes, yeah, Board Vice Chair.
Can I request that it be put on the front page under District Hot Topics so that the community can find it far easier? Would that be possible?
We can put a link there to that policy page and they can.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
I appreciate that.
Yes.
I have a question.
Okay, Board Member Golden.
Okay, because I'm a little concerned here. The public comment said that they referred to a document that was put on the website last Friday. Is that correct?
I'm not sure what day it was uploaded. I just was, found out last night that the 1718, a year ago document.
That's all right. That was what was said. And what I just heard the clerk say is that the corrected one wasn't put up until 2:00 today. That's, am I correct?
I'm not sure what time the secretary mailed it out.
Yeah, I heard the clerk say that.
I know she did have some corrections that were typos that she changed and sent them over to us.
So my question is, what, how are we, I'm with Ms. Messenger. How do we stop this from just being a conversation and make this a workshop when we just got this just now? And what is it, what's the impact of, you talked about tabling this other thing. What happens if we don't do this now?
Okay, we'll go to Vice Chair Messenger.
Of course, you can call me whenever you want. Last year, when we worked through this document, we changed it at the public hearing. So that's why I want it on the front page, so the community can respond and we can come with those notes. So at the public hearing, we can alter it if we find it necessary.
Okay.
Which is what happened last year.
Okay, I, correct me if I'm wrong, Board Member Golden. You're suggesting if the calendar and date requirements allow, you know, for, you know, tabling this workshop until the next, before the next regular meeting of the board, which would allow the public more time to review it and provide correctly informed, you know, comments. And I guess the question I have for Dr. Organic as well as staff, would that, how, what's wrong with that? Would that prejudice our going forward?
If you don't, if you approve the approval to advertise tonight, the public will have 30 days in which time, actually, it's longer than 30 days because we go until August 13th. The public hearing is set till August 13th. So the public would have from now until then to review the documents, submit questions, whatever they need to do to get their questions answered about the student progression plan. If you postpone the workshop and you don't approve advertising tonight, then the student progression plan will not get approved until the following board meeting, which we do like the student progression plan to be in place when we start the school year. As it is, I think we're a day late this time, so it would move it back two weeks. Having Ms. Organic present today is going to inform you about the changes that she's, that are happening this year that they have made to the student progression plan. And as I said, the public's going to have over 30 days to review.
Okay, Board Member Kennedy.
Yeah, I am on the favor of we go forward this, we go forward with this right now. For the same reason I wanted to go forward with the audit. These guys spent a lot of time getting ready for this. So we do have board, community, everybody has over six weeks before final approval. And I was going to say that about timing too. Michelle covered it well about the dates. I mean, as of now, we're going to approve on August 13th. School starts August 12th. So I just don't see the harm in going forward with this today.
I just have one question. Okay, Board Member Golden.
Yes, sir. I just want to be clear that all we are doing tonight is reviewing a proposed student progression plan that we will vote on six weeks from now, after it's been advertised and after the public has had an opportunity to provide input. Is that what this is? Okay, so this is not the plan that we are going, okay.
It's just a draft. It's just to introduce new legislation that just got signed yesterday that impact changes to the student progression.
Okay, so all that really has happened is that we've had public comment from the public about a plan that somehow was the old plan. Is that, am I right?
Right, and tonight, we authorized publication of a notice and it will refer to really the new plan. And we can have another workshop.
Okay.
Can we have another workshop before the public hearing? You know, to consider this. You know, this would be the July meeting of the board?
July 23rd.
July 23rd.
The July 23rd for a workshop and get feedback before we make any final approval of the progression plan. I, I'm looking for, I guess that's the case, okay? And I guess that's what we all want to know about, going along with Board Member Kennedy's suggestion. We're here, they put a lot of work into it. And so what's here, what we have to turn, we hear the apology, we accept the apology, let's go forward, so, okay. Thank you.
So you'll notice in your change summary document, the very first section of the chart is based on House Bill 7071, which was signed yesterday. So there are nine additions to the student progression plan that are completely based on statute. And I'll go through those first. And then I didn't know, time permitting, if you wanted to continue on. The rest of it is all language change, such as grammatical errors, you know, sentence structure, wordsmithing to add for a little bit of clarity here and there. But those are all, those are not statutory changes whatsoever. So I'll start off with the things that were just signed yesterday. So for House Bill 7071, we need a bigger, uh-oh, bigger space here. So you'll see at the top of the change summary, oops, I just fast forwarded here. It talks about what changes you'll see on this document, which is the draft. The footer has been changed to reflect the new school year. So the title page date is changed to 1920. There are edits throughout the document that are just for grammatical or typographical changes and do not affect the meaning or the intent of what the content is in any way. Those are the ones I was describing after these legislative changes. As you, we go on, any changes that are made will make changes to the page numbers and the formatting as we move along. So the first thing that is a change for us is Section D. This is on page 21, letter F. So they've added to the remedial instruction and intervention strategies for students, they've added in-person academic advising for struggling high school students.
Mr. Chair.
Yeah, Board Member Golden.
Yes, ma'am. Because you said, we have a limited amount of time here.
Yes.
And this is just me, but what you're about to give me is an explanation of changes that I can't do anything about.
Correct.
These are changes that were made by the legislature.
That is correct.
Is that correct? Okay, what I really want to hear from this level are the changes that are being made that I can do something about or that I can hear from the people in the community that this board can do something about. I don't want to be this, "Well, we shouldn't be doing this and we shouldn't," and then have the answer always come back. The legislature's done this. And so if you could help me, and maybe the others want to hear, because what you're about to give me are all of the legislative changes that have already been made and signed by the governor.
Yes, they were just signed yesterday.
You see, so me sitting up here listening at a parent's house, "I don't think that child should do this and I don't think that you all ought to be doing this." That's a waste of everybody's time. No, I'm serious. We spend all that time talking and we create all these hard feelings and all this ill will. So is there a part of this that has been left to our discretion? That has been left to something that we as a board can do?
Well, if I go through.
Everything after that.
Everything, everything after that. Everything after the legislature.
The other pages.
Everything after the legislature.
Yes. And the only reason we put that in there, typically, we go over those just to bring an awareness as to what we cannot control because a lot of times people will complain about things that are out of our hands. And there are some exciting new things. And I'm just going to do a little plug for a second about a new graduation path, which is the CTE graduation pathway. So that is very exciting. I like to give it a little promo, even though it's nothing you can do anything about, just to make sure that the public knows about that because that is a very exciting option.
But you know what I'm going to do? I'm going to be quiet and let you do your job.
That's okay.
However you want to do it, but.
That was the most exciting part of the legislation for me, so I can move on. Just wanted to make sure you knew that.
Mr. Minor.
Okay, Board Member Kennedy.
Kim, before you get rolling, I just want to make one request. And I know I should make this up the superintendent, but she's not here, so I'll just go straight to you. When, if it's not already posted, when the corrected progression plan gets put up on the hot topic or the link is there on hot topics, could you post this document as well with it?
The summary, absolutely, yes.
That'd be super helpful.
A lot easier, I think, yeah.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chair.
All right, so if we go to where it says General K-12 Section, then that is out of our new legislation.
Okay.
So, some of these, again, are just changes of some clarifying language. So for example, the first one, Section A, page 7, it used to read a bona fide Bible record and has been updated to, say, an original or certified copy of a religious ceremony certificate. That is for student enrollment. And they felt that that was just more inclusive language than referring to the Bible. Section A, page 8. So Section A, page 8, we have the copy of the student's school record is clarifying language for Section A, at the very top, the very first sentence, "This is a verification of age that goes along." It's the same section, the first one here with the certified copy of religious ceremony certificate. They go together for verification of age. The next one is about evidence of immunizations. The agency that was referred to used to read HRS and now it's DH for Department of Health. So that is updated just for the name of the agencies. The next one on Section E, on page 11. This is the overage student. The next one on Section E, on page eleven, this is the overage students. And this is, again, just a language change. It used to say the executive director of secondary schools, but the correct title is secondary education. That's all, it's changing. Page eleven, let's see, they use the word semester count, they added semester count when they're talking about the student count. So, it was more specific, a semester count versus just count is what it used to say. The count begins. So, we just changed it to semester count so people understand clearly what that count was. The next one is for ESE students. They took out, they, it was really an unnecessary sentence saying the guidelines apply for all other students. This is talking about giving an education to an ESE student until they turn twenty-two years old. It was really not necessary to say the guidelines apply for all other students. So, that was suggested to be removed. Talking about the open choice enrollment program, the name of it is called the School Choice Open Enrollment Period. So, that was changed from open choice application. So, they just wanted to make sure the correct reference, title reference, it was done twice in that paragraph. So, then if we move on to page twelve, let's see, students can only be in attendance at one school as assigned by the Office of Student Assignment other than being enrolled in virtual or home school. So, this is just to really pinpoint what allowable, allowable schools of enrollment are, just adding that language, because that wasn't in there previously. And we're on page thirteen, clarity language for, it said unaccompanied children and youths are defined as homeless students. It was just moving that phrase to the end of the sentence. So, now we'll read unaccompanied children and youths not in the physical custody of a parent or guardian are defined as homeless students. It's just reworking the sentence. On page fourteen, a portfolio evaluation by principal or designee. They added the word including, and they just mentioned, they didn't need to say the portfolio should include, they're just listing samples of coursework, area assessments, and standardized tests are the things that are listed in the portfolio. So, instead of having that phrase, the portfolio should include down at the bullet, they put including further above that, because all those things have to be included. Page fifteen, just a change of language, they're talking about a dependent child of a service member and about the alternative assessments that are concordant to a passing score and the required state assessments. Instead of saying they shall satisfy, it is has satisfied the assessment requirement for a standard high school diploma. Page sixteen, this states about, it says the grade, the number and percentages of all students in grades three through ten performing at a level one and two of the, and it used to say reading portions of required state assessments, but the correct language is required English Language Arts, ELA, state assessment. So, it's just, again, using the correct terminology. Then on page sixteen, it says any revision to the district's policy on student retention and promotion from the prior year. The department, it should say Department of Curriculum and Professional Learning, that's the name of our department, whereas it used to say just Curriculum and Instruction Division. So, this is just, again, using correct terminology. The allocation of resources, it was just the addition of an S on grade to become grades, including K through three, whereas it used to just say three, but with House Bill seventy-sixty-nine, allocations are supposed to have priority for the early learners K through three. So, it needed to just add the K in there that wasn't in there before. Uh, let's see, next page, so page, where am I? Page nineteen, Section B, the homework guidelines. They removed, schools have flexibility to organize specific content areas, and homework grades, they removed, should be aligned with a rubric and should reflect the attainment of content knowledge was left in. So, it doesn't necessarily have to be something aligned with a rubric, but it does need to reflect the content knowledge they're supposed to know. Homework grades should not be impacted by non-academic. They originally had said points of interest, they just wanted to, they thought the better word was criteria instead of points of interest. Paper headings, use of specific writing utensils unless accounted for in the grading, and instead of rubric, because we removed rubric up above, it just, it's changed to expectations, what the grading expectation is. Page twenty is talking about MTSS and the early warning system and elementary reading decision tree needed to be added in there. That is a resource that the state wants us to use for MTSS, and we have used it, that's been part of the procedures ongoing, just never was in here. So, we have added that in there to make it clear to staff that they should be using the decision trees to determine if students should go into MTSS. Page twenty-three, students who are retained must be provided evidence-based explicit systematic and multisensory reading instruction in an area of deficit. So, again, this is, so it's clear, they don't have to receive instruction in all of those things, phonemic awareness, phonics, fluency vocabulary, they may not need it in only one area. So, that's why that was added in there, one, an area of deficit. Could be one of them, could be two of them, could be all of them. Page twenty-six is our next, this is under good cause. This is again, just for clear definition, it used to say the students who do not meet grade level standards will be supported in the next grade level. We just specified grade level standards in English Language Arts and Math. It's just specifying what standards they need to be meeting to be supported in the following grade. Further down from that, we have good cause, let's see, a student in grades K to two can be placed for good cause if a committee comprised of the student's teachers, school counselor, or other appropriate personnel are designated by the principal, and this is the part that was removed, has evidence that the student's observed academic performance on selected assessments such as a student's classroom work, observations, tests, or other relevant information is at a, oh, sorry, is at a level appropriate for success in the next grade. And then they also took out the committee must. So, this just shows, there was some repetition in there, they took that sentence out, and it would say documents and recommendation and the reasons for the student's exemption from the promotion criteria. So, it's just kind of skipping some redundancy in there and shortening up the passage. And then it says students will receive, instead of remediation, we are calling that intervention and support in the next grade level. All right, page twenty-seven, good cause four. So, this one is, as again, there was more repetition in here, they have to include evidence at the benchmarks assessed by the grade three reading required state assessment, and it said required state assessments have been met. So, that just got deleted because it was repetitive. Again, here we have sixty percent literary text, forty percent informational, it said test, S-T-E-S-T, and it should have been T-E-X-T, so it's just a typo, so that was fixed to text. And then at the bottom, let's see, words with the district schools adopted core reading curriculum that are aligned with the state's standards. So, the good cause four wasn't necessary there, it was repetitive because it was at the top of the block in the chart. The next one is good cause on page twenty-eight, about students in grades four through five. I'm behind on my slideshow here, I think. Oh, no, that's, that's a moot point. Let me just close this up, because it's just confusing. Those are the legislation ones. Okay, so this one is, students in grades four through five can be placed for good cause if a committee comprised of the student's teachers, school counselor, or other appropriate personnel are designated by the principal, has evidence that the student's observed academic performance on selected assignment assessments such as the student's classroom work, observations, tests, or other relevant information is at a level appropriate for success in the next grade. The committee must, again, this was a repetitive, just like the previous one that we saw, for a good cause, A, comma, the page prior, on twenty-six. So, this was just, again, a removal of repetitive business, and again, at the end, student will receive, it used to say remediation, again, we changed that to intervention and support in the next grade level. Again, it's just for specificity, if I can say that right. Page thirty-two, we are now in, oh, wait a minute, did I miss, I missed twenty-nine, sorry. Intensive, it used to say intensive remediation, we now call that intensive intervention versus remediation. And there was an addition of state statute there for letter A, one zero zero eight point two five. So, on page thirty-two, these are middle school required courses. It says the required study of state and federal government and civics education will be incorporated into civics. Beginning with students entering grade six in the two thousand twelve-thirteen school year, one of these courses must be at least one semester civics education course. They just removed the language that talks about what year it began in, because it was not a necessary point. And because further on, it says beginning with the two thousand thirteen-fourteen school year, again, it didn't really matter what the year of implementation was on that. Page thirty-five, the grading scale, the NG was not on there, so it's, it means no grade assigned, which would be if a student wasn't in school long enough. You know, sometimes you get a student who transfers in from somewhere and has been here from another county, you know, for the last two or three weeks of school or something, and they don't have enough grades to be able to give someone a grade, they give them the NG, no grade assigned. Page thirty, also on thirty-five, additionally, parents may monitor student progress regularly through the Focus Parent, and it was written as a parent viewer, but it's really the parent portal, so that was just changed to be correct again with the terminology. Page thirty-seven, this is added language. This is up at the top on thirty-seven. This is talking about the calculation for courses if an ESE assessment waiver is granted. So, this is added language, semester grades in civics for students using an ESE end-of-year course, sorry, end-of-course assessment waiver will be averaged as follows, and it's twenty-five percent at each quarter. So, that is a new addition. Page forty-two, Florida course credit statute, this one's about midway through the page. So, again, this is just a clarity issue. If you say, if the recalculation of a year-long grade, even if a semester grade of F was not earned, would result in a higher final grade for the student, this statute may also be applied. Instead of just saying it may be applied, it may also be applied, and the numeric semester grades will be averaged to calculate a year-long grade. If this average is to the student's benefit, it will be entered into the student's academic history as the final grade for the course. Each school will, instead of saying develop a process, we're saying follow the district plan, because otherwise you'd have every school doing your own process, and we wanna have more consistency.
Mr. Minor.
Board Member Kennedy.
Before you go on, I just wanted to point out to Mrs. Mendel and the other parents who might be listening later, that the and/or that you were talking about in public comment, that's there in the middle school section, you've already seen it? Okay, just wanted to point it out. It is there, so we don't need to go reinvent the wheel again this year. Okay, thanks, Kim.
Okay. All right, so that's, we're on to the next page, oh, still page forty-two. Isn't that the same one we just read? Yeah, it's on here twice for some reason. Oh, we're on high school, that's why. Okay, so the same thing here, each school will follow the district plan to ensure that the grade recalculations complete instead of creating their own process. Page fifty-one, okay, page fifty-one, this is something that is out of date, the language is out of date, that used to say, it said no student may be granted credit toward high school graduation for enrollment in the following programs of courses, and letter C was more than three credits in practical family arts and consumer science classes. And that is not up-to-date language. So, that was removed. On page fifty-three, students shall be exempt from the payment of any fees excluding restocking fees when applicable for AP courses in which they are enrolled. That is at the top here under AP.
Mr. Chairman, just for a question.
Board Member Holmes.
Could you go back to number five? And I just, I just wanna make sure, because I'm not clear on this, more than one credit in exploratory vocational courses, I just wanna make sure that that would not be in conflict with the new pathway which allows substitution for certain technical courses for a math credit and all that. It may not, I just wanna make sure it doesn't.
It should not, because according to House Bill seventy-seven-one, in here it talks about the level of rigor, and it has to be approved to be a class at a certain level.
Exploratory is just an introduction to carpentry or welding or whatever?
Right. So, that would not necessarily qualify.
Just wanna make sure, that's all?
Yes.
Thank you.
That's too introductory. All right, restocking fee, okay, so page fifty-three, students earning a DRF in an advanced placement course, at the end of the first semester may be withdrawn and scheduled into another course in the same subject area. So, this was removed so that there was not a timeline that it had to be at the end of the first semester. So, in other words, if somebody is really tanking in the beginning of the year instead of making them wait till the end of the first semester, they can remove them from that sooner, so they could find another course. Page fifty-four, Avid, again, removing language for clarity, it said is an elective course designed to prepare students for college readiness and success. Students who apply for and are accepted into the course must also be, take at least one rigorous weighted course. So, it needs, instead of rigorous, we changed it to weighted course honors, pre-AP, AP, IB, Cambridge ACE, and dual enrollment. And this is added, and the Avid Academic Elective. So, they changed the elective course part, that it's not considered an elective course, so that was removed, and it's not considered a course but a program. And the rigorous, they decided to change to weighted instead of a rigorous course. So, that is new in the Avid Academic Elective. Ugh, elective, can't even talk. Let's see, oh, and at the bottom of that, there's also the word the was taken out. Principals are encouraged to make exceptions to the placement criteria in avid students' areas of strength, instead of in the avid students' area, just a grammatical. The next one is on page sixty-eight. Okay, on sixty-eight, so this is students currently holding a certificate of completion, who are, this is added, who are seeking a standard diploma, must meet concordant score requirements based on the statute governing their ninth-grade cohort requirements. So, this was added so that it was a little clearer, because before, that language was not in there, and it just said that the students can use SAT or ACT score to meet high school graduation testing requirement. So, this language is added in to just make it a little clearer or specific. On page sixty-nine, talking about the Excel diploma. This again was outdated language that was removed, talking about students enroll- that was removed, talking about students enrolled prior to two thousand thirteen fourteen, and talking about graduating with a class of two thousand fifteen, so that is all outdated language that was removed. On page seventy-one, we have the GED Testing Center. Again, this is outdated language, it was located at Manatee Tech's West Campus next to Bay Shore High School, open four days a week to accommodate all students who are ready to take their GED. So that is outdated information that needed to be removed. Then on page seventy-nine, this is the EOC assessment waiver. So this is including the grade calculation for courses when the ESE assessment waiver is granted, this is how it's broken down, this is added, semester grades for students using an end-of-course waiver will be averaged as follows, and basically it just shows that all four quarters are fifty percent. And then the next section here at the end, we have the MVIP programs on page eighty-two to eighty-three. This is again, changing of dates, talking about, it used to say for the eighteen nineteen school year, we changed to nineteen twenty, the grades K to five criteria, children who are five years old on or before September one, now it has to be obviously two hundred, two hundred, two thousand nineteen instead of eighteen, and eligible to start kindergarten in August of two thousand nineteen, getting rid of the eighteen. And again, updating the dates to enter first grade, it had to be by September one of eighteen, not September one of two thousand seventeen, because that would put them in the wrong grade level. And again, at the, on the last page here, state district testing scores, other assessments from the, it says seventeen eighteen school year, which obviously we updated to the eighteen nineteen school year, to reflect this year's school grades. And then, again, the last thing, grades six through twelve, talking about the standardized test from the eighteen nineteen school year, because seventeen eighteen is outdated. Then this last, on page eighty-three, this is for MVIP. There was some revised language for definition of the application process, so it now, they added in there to apply for admissions in the enrollment window as posted on the Manatee County Virtual Program website, and they give the website address there. So instead of just saying reside in Manatee County, they remove that and say you can apply for admission and tell you where to go to do so, because before it didn't say that. And then on page eighty-four, they added language to define course completion requirement for continuation in the program. So one of the requirements was to enroll and complete six half-credit courses each semester in order to be in the continuation of the program. And that's it, other than the legislative stuff at the beginning. Those are all the, mostly just clarity of language, changing dates to update them, pretty minor changes. And the legislative, there's nine additions, and I think they're, they're good, you know, we have that new graduation pathway, and they're not huge changes, really, other than having a new graduation option. And there's a new, in your book, you'll see the new graduation requirements chart that's updated with the current, with the CTE pathway and all that, that's new.
Board Member, Board Member Kennedy.
Yeah, I just have one thing real quick, that in, in the superintendent's response over the weekend, or maybe yesterday, that board members, if you didn't see it, the superintendent responded to one or all of the parents, I can't remember, but to, but to agree that we should include that waiver, kind of that principal's discretion waiver actually in the document, in the, so I just wanted to make sure that's kind of on everybody's radar, that that's another page we're gonna, we're gonna add on before we do final approval, or if the board approves it, we'll put it through.
Okay, thank you. Okay, Board Member Hope.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. On the last page eighty-seven, which I'm assuming is like a summary of adoption revisions and all that, very last page, very last page. Is, is that correct, revised in two thousand twelve and two thousand thirteen?
These are some of the information that is in, from the original document, because you know, we just updated every year, so some of the original things came from that. So some of these older, you know, two thousand eleven.
Wait, no, I get that, but what I'm asking, is this current, or should we have revision dates for like two thousand seventeen, two thousand nineteen, or what is it supposed to be telling us?
This is, to my knowledge, this is all updated, and surely, what did?
I, I, I do not know if this is one hundred percent updated and accurate. It, it used to go to the board attorney, and the board attorney or the district attorney would update that page, but I don't know that that's.
It just seems rather old.
I don't know if it's gone to Mitch.
I don't know, but I would find out about that, obviously, before.
For completeness.
Yeah.
Okay, good point. Board Member Golden.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you very much, but this is my first rodeo, so what I'm probably gonna ask, has probably been asked a lot of times before. This document, who is it prepared for?
Well, this is a guideline that we follow in the district, so all of our principals, teachers, everyone knows, we need to follow along with this, as well as parents for the community, so that they can refer to that and be more knowledgeable about the plan for their students' education.
Okay, that's what I thought. I, I just want, if I were, if I had a kid going from the third grade to the fourth grade, is there a piece of paper that I could read at the eighth-grade level that says for your child to move to the fourth grade, you gotta do these one, two, three, four, five, six, seven things? If that doesn't happen, that child is not gonna be promoted. I know that's what this says, but I'm reading this and looking at this, this is a professional document to help professional people keep straight. What I'm asking is, is there any way, at least, where you go, the second, you know, you go from the third grade to the fourth grade, and then you go from?
Fourth to fifth.
No, what puts you in middle school?
Six, going fifty-six.
Fifty-six, and then you go to high school, okay, so I'm, I'm saying, your kid is now getting ready in a middle school. This is what must happen, these three, hold on to this piece of paper. Is there anything like that, that when I go out to my opening night, or whatever they call it at the school, is there anything that, that I can look at?
Checklist of what your student be able to?
Yeah, what you need to be able, and if you, if you have questions, go, go to this way, if you don't understand this, is there anything that we can do to, to help parents with that?
There isn't anything currently right now that is a separate document, I mean, we have on the report card all the expectations that the student would meet to be promoted, and that's when they get stamped promoted, but isn't a, like what you're talking about, a checklist, that would be something?
That's after the fact. The report card comes when I'm, when I messed up and tore it up and threw it in the garbage and didn't show it to my people. So can, is that, is that possible to try to do something to help?
Create some, a parent-specific document?
Yes.
Kind of a checklist where your student needs to be in progress throughout the year to be able to move on to the next grade?
Not just academically, but, because this covers more than academics.
Yes.
Okay. How would, do we have to ask for that, or how do we do that?
We produce connections publication, and there's a fifth to sixth grade, yeah, the sixth grade version of connections, and there's an eighth to ninth grade versions of connections that has that information in it.
That same kind of?
District doesn't print it for students anymore, so we post it on websites.
Okay, so, okay, so if you have a computer, you can go on website and get it.
Thank you, Board Member Golden. Thank you all for comments, thank you, Dr. Organic, and we'll move on. We're running a little bit behind, we got a couple other items that are very important that we do before our break, before, after which we have a regular meeting. The, we have a review of internal auditor draft agreement, that sounds like a great thing, and I guess our clerk's gonna hand out, she has the updated proposed version, you know, for discussion, and it's on the agenda for tonight for approval, I believe. And?
Is this on the agenda? No, it is not.
It's not.
It's on the agenda.
I thought it was, okay, I think it should be, okay.
Thank you.
Okay, why, why doesn't Mr. Shin come forward?
Thank you.
Okay, let's put it on.
We need to have it approved. It won't get added after.
Okay, all right, all right. Kind of its background, at our last, you know, board meeting, the board approved that the district enter into an agreement for the services of Carr, Riggs, and Ingram to provide internal auditor, you know, services for the coming fiscal year, beginning July one. And it was subject to entering into an agreement with CRI approved by, you know, the board. There has been discussions that went on, the audit committee, you know, was involved. I think that if we were to cut to the chase a little bit, maybe we could have, Dr. Russo, still here, I can't, and there, there has been an agreement that I think carries with it the endorsement, you know, of the audit committee to, you know, proceed. It's, contains much of what we had, you know, last year with some changes, and I, I've been through this, I've had discussions, you know, with the audit committee myself, and with Mr. Shin, and I, I find that it, you know, serves our district, you know, to go forward with this, but I'd like to hear, you know, from Dr. Russo, you know, her comments concerning this proposed agreement, that if there's a consensus that we have, that we approve this tonight, it will be on the agenda, you know, for tonight. So, Dr. Russo?
The engagement letter outlines the services that are expected to be performed over the next year. This particular contract would look at audit areas defined in the risk assessment. There's a little bit of different language from last year, we took out the section on ERP, because the work we'll do there is under the audit section in this language. The post-audit reviews, I had said to you, the audit committee asked for more definition there, and you'll notice that there are several that are planned in addition to some that may come up during the school year. And then there is a section under indirect services, which there has been a change made, and you see that highlighted in yellow on your copy. That has been made after the audit committee saw this. I talked with Mr. Shin as well as with Mr. Minor about this today. There is a concern, as I understand it, about having lots of people at board meetings, we've raised that concern about staff, but also, this is referring to having multiple auditors at a meeting, and so there are times when there needs to be one, more than one of the auditors, depending on the report, and so this is just saying that it's not just gonna be five people walk in the door, there'll be some sense as to who is at the meeting and why, and it would be authorized either by the board chair or by the audit committee chair. We've done that to some extent, Mr. Shin has on occasion said to me, do you need this person at the meeting, and I'll say, no, that's not a good use of their time, or I'll say, yes, bring this individual so that the committee can speak with them. So that's one change that was made, this is the audit committee. There is another change under the in-house internal auditor, that's the section we had told you, we had asked for more elaboration on exactly how they're gonna work with them, because we really do want the firm to mentor and coordinate with this individual, and so we have outlined that in there. And then there's also a comment that was made in yellow, when the individual is working with CRI, one of the things you had asked for was a liaison, so that this individual could actually be pulling documents and doing pieces of the audit, rather than overburdening the finance staff. So you have an individual who's a point of contact now, but if it's a CRI audit, even though that individual may be assisting, it is CRI who will be writing those reports. There are reports, the in-house auditor will write specifically like the internal accounts and things, but that's a separate task. But we wanted clarity here, that when it is a CRI audit, that's been authorized by the board, CRI will be writing those reports. There was some concern, I guess someone raised, about having in-house.
Board Member Kennedy.
Question's for Mr. Wagner, actually, and maybe this has been covered, but do we have a timeline for the hire of the, or the posting and hire of the in-house internal auditor?
Well, it's gonna depend on the job description, so you, y'all are having the job description to look at, to review, so we have a draft, so actually, yeah, we have made progress, we have a draft, we've, we've written the job description, it's gone back and forth a couple times, the audit committee has it, once they finalize that, we will need to bring it to the board, because it is a new job description that has been changed, so we can set a date for, you know, the end of July, the last board meeting in July, to have that done, get it on the agenda, have it approved, and we can post it the next day. I mean, we can get it posted and filled, you know, in August.
We have, the audit committee is set to discuss that job description on July eleventh at their meeting, and so the intent is to have it on your agenda for July, I think it's the twenty-third.
Twenty-third, mhm.
Okay, and I have, it's actually, I have the latest edition that the district has done, and I have to get feedback back to Mr..
Yep, so we should have somebody in August, after you do interviews.
That's what our plan is, our hope is.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, well, Board Member Golden.
I'm not quite so sure how we're going through this, but I think you all highlighted the yellow parts as not being something that had previously been discussed, and so I just wanna address, under indirect services, exhibit A, we will not bill for more than one person's attendance at a board or audit committee meeting without, this reads, without specific approval for the board chair or the audit committee chair, and I think that should be from, and I wonder if that does violence, Mr. Shin, if we ask for written approval, so that we don't have any confusion from the other auditor saying we should have got this in writing. I think this is a very important point, and it needs to be in, in writing, is that, is that a problem? Okay, all right. So this then will read, without specific written approval, from the board chair or the audit committee chair?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
That's the change, is to change for to from.
Yes, and to insert the word written between specific and approval.
You're saying you want the word written in there, without written, specific written approval?
Yes.
Okay, written approval, okay.
From.
Okay.
The board chair. All right, thank you.
Thank you. Other comments, questions?
The other change from your, the draft you have seen is on page four, again, it's under the fees in yellow. There was some change there because there is a change on exhibit A, which was just Some things got put together, and so you'll notice there is a section called unassigned for special projects, there were a lot of hours built into indirect services, they really need to be unassigned, and that's for when the board says, will you please do this audit, like homeschool, and we are looking to have lots of hours in here so that we don't have to move audits around, that's one of the things we have to not do. So if we're in the middle of transportation, I don't want to come back to you, or be misformant, doesn't want to have to come back to you and say, we need to take twenty hours out of transportation, because we need to put it over here on homeschool, we can't, we can't be doing that anymore, so we've left a good chunk of time in there as unassigned, so that when there are special requests, it also allows us, if you come back and say, we want you to do another phase of transportation, we can take hours out of there, and so we're hoping that we won't have to come back too often to make changes that way.
Mr. Chairman. Okay, Board Member Golden, yes?
I just wanna be clear, the fees here say, for services as outlined, are planned hours only and can be adjusted by direction of the audit committee. Now, adjustment is not the same as increase.
Right, that's correct.
Is that correct?
That's correct.
So, so you can take the three hundred and three dollars, three hundred and three thousand, or three hundred and forty-nine thousand and, and pay him ten dollars a hour, but you can't pay him under any circumstances more than three forty-nine without the board approval?
Absolutely not, the contract cannot exceed three forty-nine, four hundred, and also, what happens is, if the audit committee does want to make a change, perhaps it's taking fifty extra hours in the capital area, and we can take them out of the unassigned, we come back to you to say, this is what we want to do.
Still?
Yes, absolutely. But again, it's- But again, it's always, and you always see, that sentence always says, "But," the size of the contract, the amount of the contract has not been exceeded at stage of $349,400.
Any other questions? Thank you. The, Michelle, you were doing a lot of other things over there. Board Member Golden, you know, brought up, and I understood Mr. Shin to say, you know, is fine with him. There's kind of a Scrivener's there. On page, you know, four, page three, thank you. That in indirect services, the third line, it would be adjusted to, without specific written approval from the Board Chair or the Audit Committee Chair.
Yes, sir.
Okay, we got that. Okay. So, that would be what would be on the agenda tonight for approval. So that, effectively, July 1, there'd be a new contract in play between the school district and CRI, so.
I don't want to beat this horse.
No, go beat the horse.
No, I'm just thinking, why? Why do we need the Audit Committee Chair to sign? If in fact, they are only bringing a recommendation? It seems to me it would be sufficient that the board, who's signing this agreement? Aren't you signing?
Board Chair.
I'll be assigned if it's approved by the board. But it comes, it comes with a recommendation, you know, from the Audit Committee, and we have the Audit Chair here. And with, and the idea is, we're going forward with it with this correction or change for approval tonight. And so, July 1, we're all set. Alright, thank you very much. We'll see you tonight. Might need your autograph, okay. Okay, the next thing is review of amendments to board bylaws and...
The organization refused to both ensure us to defend our policies and also review the policies.
Okay, we had this in our manual. Yeah, I don't know. I hope everybody had an opportunity to look at it. It would be nice if, Neola was here to kind of go through this. The what, I have a question of staff as to, you know, how critical is it that we go through and approve some or all of these amendments? If not tonight, shortly?
Mr. Minor, we, I'm currently working to catch us up on our policies. We are still behind. Some of these bylaws have, are, from a year ago, that we still need to bring forward. Approving, you are not approving these this evening. This is just for you to review the suggested changes with Neola. And as you know, you do not have to accept the changes that Neola is putting forward. There is one new bylaw, which is the travel and per diem. That is coming from legislation recently done. So, that one is a new bylaw, which you do not have currently in your set. The other three are changes recommended by Neola. It will still require an approval to advertise and a 30-day process, which is not on tonight's agenda. So, this, tonight, was just to get you to start reviewing the bylaws and discussing the changes that are recommended in there.
Okay. I guess this is a nice time to, if anyone has some questions, to throw them out and see what's going on. I am wondering why the, there's a suggestion that the Chair would no longer be one of the authorized persons to call a special meeting. Does anybody have any, maybe staff or otherwise, have an explanation of that?
Where is that, Mr. Chairman?
Okay. Let me...
Some of the bylaws.
Chair Minor, the executive summary. I provided a list of all of Neola's reasoning for those, for these recommended changes.
Okay. We have a few things in here that... Yeah, do you have that?
Yes, it's 0165.3, Special Meeting and Emergency Meetings. And it says, revised, one basically reads, "Special meetings may be called by," and it crosses out the Chairman. And it says, "by the Superintendent." "The Superintendent at the request of the Board Chair or the Superintendent at the request of the majority of the members of the board."
Yeah.
I'm sorry.
It's the second to last page, the backside of the second to last.
Yeah, there you go. Second to last page, backside, page one of three of that document. And it's, I mean, it's a whole bunch of green.
Yeah, why would we not?
Special meetings.
Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Chair.
Yeah, Board Member Hope.
I mean, why would, why would we not provide for the Chairman or the Superintendent? I mean, I don't know why we would change that.
I don't know either. And maybe staff has some explanation.
Oh, it's wordsmithing. I see what they've done. They said, "The Superintendent at the request of the school board chair or the Superintendent..." Oh, I'll tell you why. I haven't read their explanation because the Superintendent, does the Superintendent serve as the Board Secretary? And that would be why, because I've run into this before, where the President, as the Board Secretary for, like, a Board of Trustees, is the Secretary of the Board. So, if we had an independent secretary, it'd be the Secretary that would call the special election, notify the board members. So, that's what the, I suspect that's what they've done.
Okay, so, thank you very, Board Member Hope.
Yeah, yeah.
We've always had it in the past that, you know, the Chair, let's say that the Superintendent's unavailable, but there's some very important non-emergency, you know, action that should be taken. There's no issue about that. And the Chair would be in a position, you know, for doing that. I don't know. I think personally, we have enough meetings to begin with. But I think there might be some circumstances where the Chair, it would be appropriate for the Chair to send out notice that fellow board members, we need to get together and, you know, have a meeting. Yes, Vice Chair Messenger?
I do want to say that in Section D, it does say that in an emergency situation, that the Chair can call the meeting.
Right, right.
So...
How you define?
I think it's trying to define, if you read their explanation, it says they're trying to define the separate procedures that apply to those two different type of meetings. That is, their goal in doing this is that they want different specifications for special meetings versus emergency meetings.
Okay. Any, Board Member Golden?
Yeah. I wouldn't by any stretch of the imagination pretend to be a constitutional lawyer. But if you look on page two or three, at the very beginning, I think that that kind of explains why they've altered the order. The Superintendent of the school district is the Chief Executive Officer of the District.
And the Secretary of the Board.
And as the Chief Executive Officer of the District, the Constitutional Officer of the District, the responsibility, if you will, for even convening us can fall with her, but it also can fall with you. You can do it and request her to do it. You can do it on your own. And I think that's, the bottom line is, is designed to include her as the Chief Constitutional. All of us are constitutional officers, but only because we are elected school board members. Not because you, not because there's any special power that reposes constitutionally with the Chair. That's all.
Okay. Any other discussion about this? Board Member Kennedy?
Thank you. Mr. Minor, on this, I'm on page two of our packet, in the backside of page two. This is the Standards of Ethical Conduct. 0124. Go to page two and then the backside of page two.
I call that
No, no.
Three of three, or? Am I in the wrong?
One of four.
Okay.
Just, yeah, go to, yeah, there you go. And, Mr. Minor, on that page you're looking, the second page, that's page one.
Right here, okay.
Now, look at page two.
Okay.
Okay, and that, go to page three. I see what you're doing now. Now, flip that over and go to page four, okay? I had to follow your eyes, but I see now, okay. Yeah, you'll notice it says, "Select Option 1 or 2." And basically here, I would suggest that we just go with Option 1. Because the options here are, Option 1 is the language that Neola lays out, which I think they've done pretty well. Or Option 2 is "Create Your Own." So, we have hired Neola for a reason. And reading through it, I think they've done a pretty good job as far as ethical conduct. So, I would suggest we go with Option 1 there. That's just my opinion. And then there's one more at the...
Where does it have Option 2 on?
It's another page over.
Yeah, keep going.
Thank you.
No, turn, turn back to the back page. Alright, now we'll go over to here, right there. Which is no option. It says, yeah, it says, "We create it." And Mr. Kennedy is suggesting, rightly so, in my opinion. We told the...
Okay, thank you.
That we...
Any other comments?
Yeah, Mr. Minor, one more. On the same line, on, I'm on, back where Gina was before, 0165, Special and Emergency Meetings. There's another, choose Option 1 or 2, and it says, Option 1...
What page are we talking?
This is, Mr. Minor, this is the very last page in the packet. And then go to the other side. I'm on the third to last page. Keep going, there you go, that one you're looking at.
Okay, Special and Emergency.
Down, down at the bottom. Down at the bottom. Option 1, choose this option if there is a daily newspaper of general circulation in the county, which there is, so we are Option 1.
When did that start?
I don't know. Eighty years ago, maybe? Before my time, I'll put it.
Okay, assuming they don't go out of business tomorrow, okay.
So, I just want to point those two things out.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments regarding page one of three? Looks like Vice Chair Messenger?
Only that I agree with Mr. Kennedy.
Okay. We have a lot of agreement going on here.
Mr. Kennedy, can I ask, with you choosing Option 1, it says, "Numbers 2 through 5 are optional methods."
Sorry, Michelle, let me get back there.
Yeah.
Under Policy 165.3, Special and Emergency Meetings, choosing Option 1, under item number one, publishing a notice in the newspaper. It says, "Note, numbers 2 through 5 are optional."
Oh, sorry.
So, you all need to decide if you want any of those. We need to select those as well.
Okay, I'm sorry. I, what I was...
I'm going to say no, because I don't want to go down and post on the courthouse door. But we usually publish in the newspaper, and that's it.
Yeah, which would be...
Hello?
Which, hello?
District's website.
Hello?
Hi, this is Charlie, who's this?
Oh, I guess I got a missed call from this number.
Hey, how's it going?
Welcome to the school board meeting.
Okay. We're looking forward to you delivering dinner at 6:00. Thank you.
Alright, wrong number, alright.
That's a first. A great system.
Somebody that doesn't have our number.
Spying on us, outside the...
They didn't even sign in. I think it was Norm being a ventriloquist. Okay.
I want to have a workshop on security of the phone system coming into the boardroom.
We worry about taps. Okay, now, any other comments? I guess there's kind of consensus that we just go with publishing in a daily newspaper and forget the other options.
The posting on the district's website.
Yes, I was about to say that.
Number three.
Uh, yes, number three.
Okay.
Thank you, Michelle.
The front door of every school in the district.
Okay, we, any further discussion on this? I guess at some point, in our August meeting, I guess, or July meeting, we'd bring this up before the board for approval?
Approval to advertise.
To advertise it.
To advertise.
And then, 30 days later, at the end of August, you would vote to approve these.
Okay.
So, under the new travel and per diem, there is it's Policy 147.1. So, it's the back of the third page from the back of the packet. There are a couple of choices as well that you all need to... First of all, in-county travel. It said, "You have a choice of members, this is for travel on official business performed within Manatee County by members of the board, shall be reimbursed at the maximum rate or, if travel performed by personal automobile shall not be reimbursed." So, you all need to choose one of those.
Yeah, Board Member Messenger, or Board Vice Chair Messenger, excuse me.
I guess this doesn't really apply, because this is just in-county. And I feel like we drive all over the county, and I never expect to be reimbursed for anything. Because that's the county we live in. So, I'm kind of inclined to say, "We don't need to be reimbursed for that." But just out of curiosity, when we do travel out of county, and I, maybe that's addressed in the next section, when we do get paid for mileage, is that in line with what this, the maximum allowed here, like, as it says? Or is that per what the county does? Which I know, it's whatever the county does, but is that also in line with what the law says, I guess is my question? Or do you know?
I don't have an answer to that. I'm, we'll get mine out.
I thought we were bound by the state travel guidelines and reimbursement.
Heather's not sitting over there, she would be able to answer that.
We are bound by the state.
There aren't options in the out-of-county one anyways, so that's fine. I got, like I said, I feel like we were elected here, and this is our county, and I don't feel like we should be reimbursed for traveling within the county. That's just my opinion on that.
I agree.
I don't agree. How many commissioners, I think, you know, get reimbursed for such travel? And we try to encourage, you know, board members to go to official things, be it a graduation. I know, you know, last week, I attended, you know, four graduations, all up in the East. Now, it's not going to break me, but these were official, you know, business, you know, to be there. I'm thinking more about others. If you're doing official business in your car, and you're going up and, you know, filling up your gas, you're not being reimbursed for extra time. filling up your, your gas, you're not being reimbursed for extra time or away from your other job, which, you know, basically is me, but I'm thinking about others. At least for your, you know, let's see, um, you know, it, it's sort of out-of-pocket expenses, shouldn't you be reimbursed for that? I am reimbursed, and I should, you know, if I'm representing this district, you know, at a function outside the county, how is that different, uh, from, uh, in-county if you're doing it? Okay, Board Member Kennedy.
Um, I think the difference is it's a quick trip. I was at those graduations with you last week. I wouldn't expect the, the school district to reimburse me from driving to my house to Braden River High, even if I did it five days a week, and I, I think out-of-county, absolutely, especially, you know, the Florida School, the Coalition, um, but I just don't think it's a good look as School Board Members to have our hand out to the taxpayer to say, um, you know, hey, you need to pay me fifty cents a mile for every time I drive to a school event, I just, I, I think that would reflect very poorly on us.
Okay, any other comments? Board Member Hope.
I think I have a couple of questions, and I'm, I'm, I'm trying to look at it from a different perspective. When employees, when administrators in the district use their own vehicle, I, I know the Superintendent's given a car allowance, so that covers her in-county travel, so she is provided with compensation for that to cover those costs through that, the, the, her car allowance. When other district employees, administrators are using their own vehicle to, to visit school sites or things like that, are they reimbursed for in-county travel?
The...
Other employees, administrators within the count, within the school district, if as a part of their job, they use their own personal vehicle and burn their own gas and travel to other school sites, are they reimbursed for travel?
Yes.
Okay. And, and then I'm thinking through, what if we have a Board Member that is elected, uh, that it would actually be a hardship financially for that Board Member, retiree or whatever, uh, and they would be compelled to either not be able to afford to travel, and you always have the option of not submitting a request for, for reimbursement, but I guess I'm thinking through somebody who may follow us, where, you know, and what if gas goes up to five dollars a gallon, and, you know, going to those, uh, you know, meetings or something like that, or the, the SAC meetings or something like that, so I don't, I wouldn't want to restrict it, because while we may not need or ask for in-county reimbursement, it could be a hardship on someone else, and if, if other employees, who quite frankly, working in the district as administrators make more than we do, if they get reimbursed for using their own vehicle, um, you know, I don't, I don't think it would be different, especially if it's, if it's, if it's direct district-related business, you know, at the request of a principal, meeting with a principal, so I, I'm, I, I think I'm in line with the Chair, because, um, I, I wouldn't want to have a future Board Member in a situation where they were not able to, or provided a hardship, to be able to travel through the district and, and, and meet with, uh, parent groups, or, you know, the Palmetto Group or something like that, and what if we have a Board Member that lives in Maica, and they're going to go visit a school on Anna Maria? I mean, that's a trip.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay, thank you. Board Member Vice Chair, Vice Chair Messenger, okay.
You both have very good arguments. Uh, the only thing I want to point out, um, and, and this is not the hill I'm going to die on today, I think, is the quote from the, yeah. Um, but I do want to point out, there are district vehicles that are made available. I know I've been offered one before when my car had issues, I think they, year before last, and I couldn't, you know, so there are other options made available to Board Members, and even other, um, county employees that can use a district vehicle, um, in lieu of driving their own car and getting paid for mileage.
I understand.
Okay, good point. Board Member Golden?
I'm learning so much, I had no idea that all of these options were available, but the single most salient point for me is that while some of us can afford it, and some of us can't, the reality is that some of the duties that we perform, particularly as Chair and Vice Chair, require us to go a lot of places and do a lot of things that I know that I don't do. And, uh, every day, you're going somewhere, you're doing something in this county, and I think that we ought to plan for that, because Dr. Hope makes a good point. You don't have to submit the form, so if you feel badly about charging the district, then don't do it, but I don't think that the Chair ought to be hamstrung from being able, if he or she is going everywhere, every day, doing something on behalf of the district, uh, because that, that really does add up. And so I'm, I'm, I'm in, I, I'm, I'm looking at this, this paper, it's a new bylaw, and apparently the in-county travel has probably been, just been done before now informally, and they're simply asking if we will, uh, be reimbursed at the maximum allowed by Florida law, or shall not be reimbursed, and that's, that's as far as in-county travel goes. So we're allowing it, but we're not requiring that it be, that it be done. And I think that out of deference to whoever sits in the Chair, obviously, they do a whole lot more traveling just by virtue of being the Chair of the School Board, and should be, uh, able to, uh, to receive reimbursement, uh, for their, for, for those kinds of expenses. The, the others down here, they don't offer options, they just, I think they, the only other option down here is a five hundred dollar travel outside of the county, and I think we already have that.
That's the new state law.
Yes, and that, and I think that's, you know, set forth.
Documentation, but...
Right. So, um, I, I can appreciate what Mr. Kennedy is, is saying, but I think that there's just a big difference between the travel that is done as a consequence of being Chair or Vice Chair.
Or, or any other Board Member who does it, you know?
Well, you know, that's it.
Okay. Any other comments on these proposed bylaws? And I guess we put them on the, on the agenda for the July meeting, and, uh, we wrote on where we're, uh, going to make it official. That sounds right, okay. Uh, Board Member Hope?
Well, R, we could, because, uh, the, the, the Board Clerk is correct, we are so far behind in updating these policies that, you know, maybe we have a motion to put it on the agenda tonight to publicly post it for that third thirty-day period, so when we come July, is that the, the timing of it? I mean, would that help?
No.
No, okay, so, never mind, never mind, no, forget it.
Please don't do that.
Okay, I didn't know what you're asking of us.
I appreciate it.
I didn't know what you're asking of us, so I think you're right, and then July.
We're moving along, that's important. Okay. Um, I think that's about it. Um, I'm looking over at the Clerk. We got some other business tonight. Yeah, is there anything else? I think she's saying, cut it. Okay, uh, we are going to be adjourned. Thank you very much for everybody being here. We will reconvene in thirty-five minutes, I don't know, and, um, see you then.